I forgot I said I was going to. Unable to make it. Refractory period is in fact that period of inactivity. It can only, it can't be consistently and continuously sending out messages and firing out neurotransmitters or whatever message it's sending. It has a short, very short, relatively to our concept of time, like nanoseconds, amount of time that it cannot fire after it has gone through an entire action potential. So refractory period is that time of inactivity. Perfect, dendrites. So if we're looking at, I have a one pulled up here, right? So if you're looking at what this neuron looks like, you see these dendrites are sticking out. They're ready to capture or take in any messages. They receive messages from other neurons, right? Perfect, axon. Again, I'm just going to pull this up because I think it's easier when you're looking at dendrites receive, right? So they're over here, they're going to receive messages. And your axon is kind of this, this part of the body that is passage message, passing the message through the branches to other neurons. So it gets from the dendrites through the axon to the axon terminals, which then axon terminals send out. I might, might have just given you the answer to a question, whatever. They all go together. The correct answer here is reuptake. And this kind of idea fits more in with our understanding of neurotransmitters because oftentimes like drugs and sorts of like medicines that might treat something like depression or anxiety, right? They focus on reuptake and they focus on getting your brain to reuse neurotransmitters such as dopamine or serotonin, like drug use, like you saw when the documentary, your brain on or your body on drugs, right? Oftentimes these drugs like cocaine and heroin can mimic, right? Dopamine or serotonin in your brain to make you feel good, but it's really a fake high. It's not like your real natural high. And so understanding what reuptake is in the context of these neurotransmitters and how we can like manipulate them to make ourselves feel certain ways. That's the context in which you're going to have to really understand reuptake. Perfect, synapse, right? That junction, it's the gap. You can have this, it can be called the synaptic gap, but it's the space between axon terminals and dendrites that are passing along those messages, whether they be hormones, whether they be electrical charges, whether they be neurotransmitters. Good. So I mentioned these agonists and antagonists. Agonists are, I think about like, an antagonist is somebody who like is the bad guy. So they're like blocking your ability to like do good or like reach your goal or whatever. An antagonist blocks because they're bad. An agonist is going to then be the opposite of that and it's going to stimulate a response. So an agonist would lock to one of those receptor sites and say like, you need to produce more serotonin. And that's what like a, an upper drug would do. Something like heroin or cocaine might walk into one of those receptor sites and say like, produce more dopamine, right? And so that would act as an agonist, whereas an antagonist would block it. An antagonist would say, stop producing serotonin or stop producing so much of whatever it might be. Okay? Agonist versus antagonist. So you're recognizing those kind of in the context of, again, drug use and how neurotransmitters are being absorbed or utilized by the neuron. Boom. This is one of those things honestly, that you just have to memorize these divisions of the nervous system. They don't really come supernaturally. You just have to remember, kind of you have these, the breakdowns and it's almost like a family tree, but when you're breaking up the autonomic nervous system, there's one nervous system that's going to excite you, the fight or flight response, and one that's rest and digest, right? This is the calming of the body and that is going to be your parasympathetic nervous system. I mean, I do not speak Spanish. I took Spanish in high school, like para means stop. So that's how I remember it, like stop, calm down, slow down. So you have parasympathetic nervous system, para, right? That's a command. Anybody give me a nod or something? That's, and even if it's wrong, that's how I remember it. So it calms you down, rest and digest. Flip side, then the sympathetic nervous system is fight or flight. That's going to get you like the adrenaline rush that you feel when you are faced with some sort of trauma. Perfect. The peripheral nervous system, right? Your central nervous system is your brain and your brainstem. So you have like the nervous system is, well, I'm not at the screen, is the one at the top. And then it breaks down into peripheral and central. Central is your brain and your spinal cord, right? Peripheral is everything else. That's how you, your heartbeats, that's how you jog, right? And so these are the motor neurons that are connected to the central nervous system, to the rest of the body, right? Like it makes us be able to breathe and do whatever we need to do. Whereas the brain and the central nervous system is more like specific to neurons and passing those messages and your brain's actual functioning. Nervous system, central, peripheral, autonomic, symptomatic, parasympathetic, sympathetic. Again, just something you'll have to memorize. Endorphins. Endorphins are generally are natural painkillers. They're the ones that like, if you've ever heard of like a runner's high, right? You run and once you hit like, I don't know, it's different for everybody, like three miles, four miles, your body kind of kicks into natural overdrive and that's endorphins kicking in. Your legs don't hurt, your body doesn't hurt as bad. It's just, you're in kind of a zone. So endorphins are your natural painkillers. Boom. Serotonin is correct. I hope you guys, by the way, I hope you guys enjoyed my baseball walk-up songs that I did for you all. It was a treat, I hope. But hopefully that helps you kind of remember, right? Serotonin stabilizes our moods and our hunger and our sleep. It's a, it's a mood stabilizer. So, good. Awesome. We already talked about this. Antagonist, bad guy blocks, blocks you from producing whatever neurotransmitter or hormone. Awesome. We already talked about that too, you guys. Look at this. This is like learning or something. This is your somatic nervous system, right? This is the division of the peripheral nervous system. You have somatic and autonomic. Autonomic then breaks down into your flight or fight or digest and rest. So your, that's going to be kind of like your natural body bodily responses to stress and like different environmental factors. Somatic is like your actual, I need to go for a run and therefore I'm going to move my limbs like this, right? So skeletal kind of has somatic, skeletal, both S's are in charge of your like everyday physical body movement and what you have or have not, what you do or do not have control over. Perfect. Sympathetic nervous system is your flight or fight. Your parasympathetic, right? Para, para, stop. That's your rest and digest. And both of those are a breakdown of the autonomic nervous system. So sympathetic, fight or flight. Parasympathetic, stop, rest, calm down. Perfect. Yep. So there you have your amygdala. Your amygdala is, is really your like emotion center. And they're a part of the limbic system, which big picture. If we look at here, I'll just have this brain ready to go. So I can show you if need be. Actually, I don't see your amygdala in here. But if you're looking at your limbic system, that's going to be like all of these like really deep brain organs, parts of your brain that were first developed. And that makes sense. Think about like evolutionary psychology, right? We did the hand with the extra finger. Evolutionary psychology says like our brains have developed in a way in response to what we've experienced over time, right? Like emotion is kind of that central core feature to our ability to survive. Are we afraid of a lion running at us? Are we happy or do we feel good when we're in a safe environment with people who can protect us? Right? So those deep brain parts are what are developing first. And generally speaking, they're what control emotion. So you have your amygdala. Good. Perfect. Your brainstem is like the oldest part of your brain. And it is what is going to do things like remind you to breathe and blink and remind your heart to beat, right? Like the basic underlying functions of like how we're going to survive, like those, the basic core necessities that we don't have to think about on a day-to-day, minute-by-minute basis. I'm not like sitting here like, okay, heart, get that blood to my fingers, right? That automatically happens. And so the brainstem, again, oldest part, generally speaking, is going to be one of those core functions. Right? It is interneurons. They're connecting the brain and the spinal cord. So they kind of are the ones that connect the sensory and the motor neurons. The sensory are bringing messages from your body into your, into your brain, whereas your motor neurons are sending messages from your brain out to your body, right? These interneurons are communicating between those two. Perfect. It is the endocrine system. You really just need to know this about the endocrine system. You're not, this isn't a biology class. We're learning the biology of the brain because it gives us an understanding of the studies that have been done and how we understand psychological concepts. But like the endocrine system, while it's relevant, you only really need to know that it's a slow communication system that kind of backs up our nervous systems and getting us to take action or behave in certain ways. Hormones. Good. Yep. That's just correct. Perfect. And note that for the formative that you guys did, and it had some of these on there, I noticed that some of you got like wrong answers because like they were spelt wrong or I had like cocktail party scent effect and I didn't spell it right. Like this, they're all going to be participation only, so don't worry too much about that. I just put the right answers in so you can reference that and know like what the correct answer is, even if you wrote the right thing in just a different way. So just know, I recognize that. Good. The EEG, that's what's going to tell you what's going on while you're sleeping. It's just going to read the brainwaves. It's not doing any actual imaging. CT scan, right? This is what they do to see like, do you have like brain damage? So like the Phineas Gage story of like when the pipe went through his eye, right? They would, in today's technology, take a CT scan to see like the actual physical damage that happened to the brain. So CT scans are kind of like X-rays in that they're looking at the actual physical makeup of the brain. Is there a blood clot? Is there a tumor? Has there been severe brain damage? Is there a brain bleed, right? Those actual physical parts of the brain. This is kind of a weird phrasing of what a PET scan is. But really, when you're talking about a PET scan and you're thinking about like what its functionality is, generally speaking, you're comparing two brains, right? Or you're comparing one person's brain when they're doing one activity versus another to see where that, that radioactive activity, that glucose, it's like a, it's a form of glucose. Again, you're not going to have to know the actual science behind it, more so that you're going to see like certain spots or areas of the brain specifically light up when somebody is doing a different, two different tasks. Or when you're looking at like an Alzheimer's patient versus like a normal 50-year-old's brain, right? Like you're making some sort of comparison between two brains. And you're looking at specific areas of the brain lighting up. Perfect. And that's the MRI. You're very, you're not going to need to be able to distinguish between an MRI and an FMRI. An FMRI is really mostly, it's like, kind of like an HD version of an MRI. But this is that video with all of like the different colors and you can see like the areas of the brain like on a whole 3D scale. And so this is looking at the waves and the actual activity within a brain at any given point in time. And it's like a video more so than like just a single image. The medulla. Your medulla is actually in charge of your heartbeat and breathing. And fun fact, also vomiting and your vomit reflex. So the medulla is, you have kind of like the brainstem. If you look at this, I'm going to pull this up just one more time. So your brainstem is here, right? That's the entire kind of portion that is included in the medulla and the pons. You guys don't need to know the pons, that's not on your terms list. But we'll look at the cerebellum, so I don't want to give too much away. But your medulla is a part of your brainstem. It's at the top of the base. And that is what's going to focus, again, the brainstem being the oldest part. It's going to be heartbeat. It's going to be, if you're sick, throw up to get that whatever poison or bad stuff out of your system. So these are all based on like survival. So heartbeat, breathing, that's controlled by the medulla, which is housed within the brainstem. This is your thalamus. Similar kind of to like the nervous systems, some of these, they're new. They're new vocabulary, they're new kind of ideas that you haven't really worked with before and that's okay. But a part of learning them is repetition, 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 and remembering what each of the functionalities of these parts of the brain are. Again, we know the medulla here is kind of that basic functioning. We know the hippocampus is memory. We know hypothalamus is generally speaking, like the pain center. And then the thalamus here is really kind of the control center that brings in and sends out messages. Everything kind of works through the thalamus. And if you look at where it's located, right? It's right here. It's right in the center of the brain. If you can see this, right? Your thalamus is right here. Everything kind of goes through the thalamus and then gets redirected to where in the brain it needs to go, kind of like a, I don't know, like a post office type center. The reticular formation. The limbic system is a greater, kind of an umbrella term for where a lot of these brain parts are housed. It's not specifically one thing. A limbic system is just that. It is a system that includes the hypothalamus, the thalamus, the amygdala, all of these kind of emotion, reaction, response type parts of our brain. And that's what the limbic system is in charge of, like our emotions and our feelings and kind of like our expression, right? And so it's a system that houses multiple parts of the brain. Okay? So when you're thinking about the limbic system, it is just that. It's a system, not one single thing. Whereas here, we have the reticular formation. And you can see on this, I didn't see it on this. It's right here. It's like built in. It's a, it's basically like a set of nerves. If you think about like a wire in like your house and how sometimes like one wire will have like three different cords in it, that's kind of like what it is. And they're all twisted up and they're tightly bound. And they're what are getting the thalamus, all of the information that it needs, right? So it's a nerve network that's bringing all of that information from the body that brings it to the thalamus and ultimately leads to arousal in whatever form that might be. Whether fear, sexual arousal, anger, whatever that might look like. So you have the reticular formation. Perfect. That's your cerebellum. The cerebellum is that one that's right in the back of your head here, right? Right above your brainstem. You have your occipital lobes that sit here. Your cerebellum is right here. I always think about it. It's in the center. It's in the, right in the back of our head and it's what's keeping us balanced, right? It has other functions, but it's like number one job is to like coordinate our body movement and make sure that we don't tip over at any given time or that we stay on our feet, feet, our feet, plural, feet, or whatever that might be. So generally speaking, this is coordinating movement, maintaining your balance and then any sort of non-verbal memory or learning. So like, they always talk about like muscle memory. If you're a dancer, like, and you can do those cool spins, right? And then you don't dance for a while and then you do it five years later and you have like muscle memory and it comes back really quick. That's your cerebellum. So balance, movement, cerebellum. Perfect. Again, a system associated with emotions and drives, right? Our reactions that include, that houses, so like the limbic system houses the thalamus, the amygdala, the hypothalamus, right? It's a neural system that includes these specific brain parts that lead to our feelings of emotion and desires to want to do certain things because of those feelings. Perfect. Hypothalamus, right? That's, and if you look on this brain, right? You have the thalamus and the hypothalamus is right here. It's right above that brainstem. So again, if you like kind of envision like, So again, if you like kind of envision like evolutionary psychologists and like how they view it, we kind of, our brains basically kind of grew out from our brainstems and continued to develop from there. Right here, we have those basic necessities, we're balancing, we're breathing, we're blinking, we're, our heart's beating, right? And now our hypothalamus is starting to engage, we have our thirst drive, oh hey, you have to drink water, oh hey, you have to eat food, right? Kind of those basic necessities. And then from there, emotions and then our cerebral cortex that starts like higher order thinking and language. So think, I mean, that's how I think about it, I don't know if it's a perfect way or analogy to make, but like, think about it that way, everything kind of develops around these basic muscle movements within our body and continues to kind of grow out from there and develop from there. So eating, drinking, body temp, hypothalamus. It is the cerebral cortex, really that is, that's this part of your brain, right? Like if you're looking at like these lobes and the gray matter and the white matter of like the actual kind of the part of your brain that you most commonly associate with what like a biological brain looks like, that's your cerebral cortex, that's where your frontal lobe, your parietal lobe, occipital, temporal lobes are, and that's what's kind of protecting or like encasing everything within those cerebral hemispheres, right? All of those smaller, more intricate hypothalamus, thalamus, amygdala and whatnot. Boom. Your frontal lobe, that's your, right, your speaking quarters, you, and you'll maybe remember like the Broca's and Wernicke's areas, those are housed in different lobes because one is focused on the actual production of speech, which falls within your frontal lobe, one is actually about the, like the understanding of what is being said to you. And so that would be in your parietal lobe, but you don't need to know the difference between Wernicke's and Broca's areas for now, really just focus on big picture, what these parts of the brain, these lobes are doing. Making judgments, that's why teenagers are always said to not make good judgments because their frontal lobes aren't fully developed yet. Duh. Parietal lobe, that's the one that is kind of taking in your, like, if you feel something's hot or if you feel something's soft, right? Your kind of, your touch sense, what is that called? Doesn't matter, that, that sense. And kind of how your body is moving and how you actually physically are responding to certain things. I don't know, that was probably a terrible explanation. Perfect, occipital lobes, those are in the back of your head. And it's crazy, everything that comes in your right, your left eye is actually processed by the left occipital lobe and vice versa and everything you see is actually upside down and there's like a little, we'll talk way more about this, but it's crazy, there's like these little mirrors basically in your eyeballs that flip everything you see so that everything is upside right. But when you actually take it in, it's upside down, like bats, like in Frozen, when Olaf's like, why are you all hanging from the ceiling like bats? That's what we actually see. Perfect, our temporal lobes, right, are kind of like right here, they're behind the ear, they're what's taking in sound. Just a few more and then I'll answer any questions. Perfect, your motor cortex, that makes sense, motors make you move, motors make you go, motors make you run and therefore, right, your motor cortex, that's that little strip that goes across the frontal lobe like this, it is in control of those voluntary movements. This is kind of the counterpart to that. Perfect, that is the somatosensory cortex, that's again, another little like line that goes across those parietal lobes, so at the back of the frontal lobe, you have the motor cortex and then at the front of the parietal lobe, you have the somatosensory cortex and that's like, again, registered and processes touch and movement. So it actually feels like the movements that you're making and whether they're like appropriate movements or not, I talk so much with my hands, I, sorry, I apologize. Perfect, plasticity, you saw some of those examples which are crazy, like the guy without the brain and the little girl who had her, half of her brain removed, right? And yet, the younger you are, the more plastic your brain is and the more you can like continuously create and build those neural pathways and continue to function even without half a brain. Last question. It is the corpus callosum, here you have it, it's right here, it's that band of fibers that connects the two halves of the brain and you saw kind of that, when it gets severed, it can have positive consequences for somebody who has like seizures or other severe psychological issues. You saw the guy who had his corpus callosum severed and could do like the split-brain research where he could like draw two different things with two different hands because they were being perceived by two different halves of his brain. That's when you sever this corpus callosum, because the corpus callosum is what is in fact letting the two halves of your brain talk. All right. Bio psych, let's see our podium and then I will answer any questions. Can't see, woo, Stephanie! And first place, yay team! Awesome, okay, let me get out of this. And then I will answer any questions. I meant that to be done at four, so I'm five minutes over, that's terrible. Leave, hello? Here we are, okay. Sweet. Then, after that, hopefully that just got your brain kind of into the swing of things and recognizing like the pieces of the brain that you like have to know and like what about those functionalities like you'll be expected to know. Again, this isn't FRQ, so recognize that like you're going to be able, if you can define what it is and explain why it's relevant to this particular situation, that's what we're asking for, that's what I'm looking for, a definition and an application for each of the, of the terms you're going to be asked about. So with that, what questions do you have for me?
Are we gonna do like a lot of differences between like stage one, two, three and four of the sleep cycle or more just like REM and non-REM?
Yeah, especially since this is not like a multiple choice test, there are going to be more broad applications of your understanding of the sleep cycle itself. So you might reference like the differences between these sleep cycles, but you're not going to have to say like, that is an example, like kind of like the formative, you're not gonna have to pull, that is a specific example of stage one or that happens specifically in REM sleep or whatever it might be, because again, with that FRQ format, it's gonna be a little bit more widely applied.
Sounds good.
Is the FRQ gonna be two questions like the last one? Okay.
How much time do we have to finish?
Fifty minutes, so that's about 25 for each, I'm guessing, and I'm giving you this little tidbit of information, I'm guessing the second question isn't gonna take you as long as the first question. Make sure you're studying those diagrams.
Kind of going back to the sleep thing, just for clarification, it goes stage one, stage two, stage three, then back to stage two, and it goes like up and down?
Yep, and you, you get deeper into sleep less frequently throughout your sleep cycle.
With the thing that she just said, when does REM sleep come into the stages? Like where is it?
Yeah, so if you're looking at, and it's probably, it would probably be easiest if I had like a diagram, but I don't have one up right now, so REM sleep comes in after you have achieved like one full cycle through the stages, then you don't, you don't revisit stage one, that stage of like falling asleep, instead, kind of when you get there, you are in this REM sleep cycle where you have that rapid eye movement, where like, that's when you like look at somebody and they don't really look asleep because their like, eyes are flashing all over the place and, but that is when your brain is doing the most work, that's when you're dreaming, that's when you're kind of providing kind of that functionality of sleep in terms of consolidating the events of the day, kind of pruning what you don't need to know, all of that stuff happens generally during REM. And then the rest of it is mostly for like rest purposes and like letting your body heal itself from whatever you had done throughout the day. So you really don't revisit that like falling asleep stage, instead, it gets you to REM and then you continue to hit REM throughout the cycle while you're getting less and less deep sleep throughout the course of that cycle. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Your first REM cycle is always gonna be the longest too, it gets shorter as the night progresses. Anything else? Sweet, well, if you have questions, I'll be available tomorrow morning from 8:20 to nine. If as you're like working through some of this stuff, you have any clarification that you need, I'll be available and you can hop on and ask those or send me an email, whatever. Thank you guys for joining, I hope that it was helpful, a day kind of off of new content and some time to review, so. Awesome, bye you guys, have a great rest of your day.
Thank you.
Thank you.